Good afternoon, we're the Vongwell County Baskett Barhouse Planning Meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded live streamed on the council's YouTube channel. In addition, under the local authorities' executive arrangements, meetings and access to information, England Regulation 2012, for the people may film, record, tweet or blog from this meeting. The use of such images or sound recordings is not under the council's control. May I remind councillors to please switch your microphones off when you're not speaking? Thank you. And the same applies to mobiles if you're not being silent, please. And the officers present this afternoon are: Sorry, it's not councillor, Planning Services Consultant Andrew Bashmore, Craig Miles, the planning officer, Phil Cook, another planning officer, and Jeremy Dennis, the solicitor. I'd like to move the first item on the agenda, which is apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair, we have the four chiefs of councillor Upson, councillor Park, councillor Garland, and councillor Pedro Corrigan and councillor Price, and we have substituted this afternoon councillor Jeffrey, councillor Adair, councillor Murray and councillor John, thank you.
Any declarations of interest? The minutes of the meeting held on the 10th of February, so I wish to have some notes, that's correct. Thank you, moved by councillor Bailey, that would be by councillor. This is excellent, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is on the planning application this afternoon, or should say it is the planning application. Unusually, we only have one, and it's a planning application 18/02806 outline. It's a residential development for around 200 dwellings alongside a minimum of three hectares employment land. Formation of primary access, infrastructure, open space provision, surface water attenuation, and formation of surface water storage ponds. And it's outline application with all matters reserved except for access. Thank you, and it's in Ratcliffe on Trent. So who will present the application is this line.
Thank you Chair, I hope everyone's hearing me okay. First thing to point out, there's quite a lot to get through here, so apologies for my summary of takes so long. And please stick with me. I'd like to touch on representations first Chair, there's a couple of late representations. In fact, there's been four additional representations made. But all those comments are already considered within the report. And I'd like to point out, overall, there's forty letters of objections, one letter of support. These are summarised in the report itself. And they predominantly relate to flooding, drainage and impact on highways. But as of the way, we'll move on to the site description and location. So sure aware, the site is located to the north of Nottingham Road, Ratcliffe on Trent. The site uses agriculture forming three large agricultural fields. Delighted by existing hedgerows, total the site measures some 12.6 hectares. In terms of topography, the site is relatively flat with a slight slope running from the rear of the North Point to its own side frontage of Nottingham Road. Most distinguishing feature are the large electricity pylons which run north-east, south-west through the middle of the site. Wrapping around the west north boundary is a former mineral railway line which uses and only uses recreational footpath. Farther to the north is Home Lane and a public right of way. Immediately beyond Nottingham Road to the south side is now a moment an area of undeveloped land. Existence access to the site provided by two field gated accesses. Now this is to the north of the site of Home Lane. There's no existing access at the moment from Nottingham Road. And the land is in flood zone two, a very small proportion within flood zone three. And there's no heritage assets on our posts to the site. And it doesn't form part of our conservation area. The site is identified in local planning part two for between 150 and 200 homes. A minimum of three hectares of employment land and the policy 5.11. In terms of the proposed development, we're dealing with an outline planning application for around 200 dwellings, associated infrastructure, surface water attenuation, balancing points and open space. And you should be aware, it was previously proposed that development should be for 300 units, one hectare of employment land. But since changed following discussions with planning officers and indeed over a number of years. And with the goal in mind, all matters are reserved for future consideration and part from access. So in terms of consideration of this application, we deal with the principle of development and access. In terms of the design and layout landscaping, that's all reserved for future consideration. Should you decide to grant planning permission. That applicant proposes that the proposed buildings would be afforded improvements. In terms of access, so it's for that reference, that would be in the form of two new access points from a north side of Nottingham Road. It would also include pedestrian crossing facilities to access the bus stop on the south side of our access. The existing footpath across the frontage of the site would also be increased to metres away. There's some other transport and highways improvements which have come to there. It's also proposed to extend the 30 mile an hour speed limit on Nottingham Road. And right up to the junction of A52. Now, an indicative illustrated master plan has been submitted, presumably. Well, it is basically how the site could be developed. It's not necessarily how it will be developed, but demonstrate of how two houses could be laid out on the site and three hectares of employment land. Because of course, when we're dealing with the principle of development, but not dealing with layout, design etcetera at this stage. It's simply how it could be developed. So consideration of this application does include approval of this drawing, it's simply illustrated. But we just run through it to show how it might be developed. And demonstrate the master plan indicates the layout, with a large central suite of open space running through pretty much the middle of the site. The proposed employment land would be in the south-west part of the site. Alongside pockets of open space either side of the RSPCA development there, in the southwest corner of the site. It's also suggested that cycle paths and footpaths could be extended from the land to the footpath along the railway line and to the north, and right up to Home Lane. Our proposed surface water attenuation, storage ponds are proposed in detail within this application, which forms quite much a central part of the site. The application is supported by a number of specialist reports, which contain the description of it in the report itself, related to ecology and noise, access and transport, ground conditions, heritage, and flooding and drainage, access, trees and archeology, and travel plan. And probably that applicant has provided a heads of terms document and confirmation that they're able to all develop a request, develop a contribution request, which I'll come to later in terms of their specifics. But we should be also attached to the report in terms of separate table of actual figures and timings, payments etcetera. So I'd just like to go and sort that out. Just like to deal with the principle of development, because that's a key consideration of this application. So probably, as everyone's aware, we need to make a decision in accordance with development plan. Unless material considerations indicate otherwise. Now, this site is adjacent to St Ratcliffe on Trent. And that is identified as being a key settlement from policies three of the course strategy. Yeah, in terms of the proposals, Mark. The application site has actually allocated four housing within it for a mixed-use development up to 200 houses. It states that an area shown in the policies map is identified as an allocation for between 150 and around 200 homes and a minimum of three hectares of employment land. Development will be subject to the following requirements. There's about a list, so please bear with me. And the land identified on the allocation, we develop for employment uses, which is B1, B2, meaning their general employment uses, which is now broadly covered by classy and 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 warehouse and stuff. There's a requirement to avoid development within flood zone three. Now flood zone three comes up today. Yeah, flood zone three is on the south-west part of the site. To the west of existing RSPCA building, so in essence, no development should should occur at all. And that's indicated on the on the illustrative parcel plan. There's a requirement, a site-specific flood risk assessment, which I'll come to in more detail, will be submitted to the part of any future application and to ensure that it doesn't increase flood risk elsewhere. There's also a requirement for green infrastructure to be provided to the rights of the network around the site. And ultimately, a financial contribution towards education, health capacity improvements and to support the impact of the development. And there's requirement for contribution towards improvements, the 52, which I'll come on to. And it should be consistent with other parts of the plan. That is the key policy requirements of assessing this application against the plan policy. Just like to run through those and assess the development against them in terms of the conclusions of the report. And regarding to criteria A, the application site does propose employment land in accordance with the policy. And regarding to criteria B, the illustrative master plan, according to this application, indicates that the flood risk area in zone three is not proposed to be developed, albeit layout is subject to future reserve pattern. Regarding to criteria C. Application is within zone, flood zone two, and the flood risk assessment has been submitted. I'll come to the details of that shortly. In relation to criteria D, the layout is not considered at this stage. Because criteria D was green infrastructure, which is shown in the illustrative master plan, but it doesn't necessarily have to look like that on the result match status. It's just to show 200 houses could fit into the site, and three hectares could fit into the site. But that's the overall approach to to providing more than infrastructure. And to watch the kind of big sense, because it's on the pylons, there's probably not a lot else you could do with developing other pylons. Conditions, criteria C. E and F relate to developer constitutions, which the applicant has provided. And criteria G requires development to be consistent with other parts of the plan. Now, of course, we're dealing with the principle of development and access at this stage. And and for the consideration of that, I'll come to in a minute. But in principle, the site is allocated for housing. The applicant's provided the number of houses in to record the development plan. And employment area of three hectares, also proposed. So broadly, in accordance with their own planning principle, subject to the other matters being considered, primarily flooding, drainage, access etcetera, which remains a rest of the form. So let's start showing flooding and drainage perhaps the biggest topic. And I'm I'm sticking to what I've got down here. So the flood area, sorry, excuse me, start again. The environment agency map shows most of the sites in flood zone two, which is a moderate probability of flooding, although this doesn't take account of the presence of existing progress management infrastructure. Site has already been allocated in accordance with the plan and therefore it's not subject to any sequential test or exception flood tests in terms of assessing other better locations for housing, there's no requirement for that. In terms of assessing the site suitability, criteria C of policy two and policy seventeen of your development plan and the NPFF are of relevance. They basically say, by determining applications, local planning authorities should ensure the flood risk has not increased elsewhere. Where appropriate, applications should be submitted by a site-specific flood risk assessment. The development should only be allowed in the areas of flood risk where it can be demonstrated that the site can be appropriately managed and would not create flooding elsewhere. Now applicant submitted a revised flood risk assessment to take account of the greater Nottingham strategic flood risk assessment. Additional and additional modelling requests by the flood, the environment agency. To state that the flood risk is not considered to be significant. Entitled sources or groundwater or any artificial sources of flooding. And we should know that this modelling is will be modelled on a worst case scenario basis and takes account of the need for climate change, which is 30% in excess of the worst case scenario model. The flood risk goes on to state that the development site is not a risk of flooding from the river Thames, because the site is protected from flooding and presence of material under the railway line and bank from that home lane. See to the north, northwest of the site there, which provides a continuous line of defence. In the event of a breach or failure of the railway and might then there would be extremely low residual risk of flooding of the development site. And finished floor levels would be much higher than the extent of the flooding from the river Trent. We've also got flooding from other sources of fluvial flooding to potentially rainwater coming on the south. In terms of fluvial flooding, flood risk assessment states that flooding typically occurs when large amount of water exceeds the full capacity in the river channels. And basically, there's one channel across the site, basically the open spaces proposed at the moment, and that's the only drain on the site. The report identifies several sources and mechanisms for fluvial flooding, which includes the on-site field drain as mentioned, which could exceed its capacity and tidewalking effects from from on the pass of the district. And it also identified one group, one, sorry, Lancorp group alongside the site exceeding its capacity and flooding the site. Also a route to the west of the site that's not considered as a potential source of flooding, lies outside of the site and beyond informal flood defences that protect the site from flooding from River Trent. Flood risk assessment concludes that the site is found not to be at risk from flooding from field drains, Lancorp or regardless of the trend, under design conditions. It states that there are very small residual risk of blockage of field drains together with the failure of the river Trent by flood defences. By breach or seeping timber, these are considered low probability events that could be mitigated to the possible by good design. Also overtopping of Home Lane road defence from the river Trent has been assessed. And there is no flooding off the site based on current ground levels. Other more flood risk to Iron Lane underpass is just to the west of the site. It's also the sort of secondary to Home Lane defence, and there's no specific requirement to manage flood risk to leave it on the pass. Key to it is that the site is underdeveloped, there is no surface water sewage draining to or under the site. Therefore, the existing risk of surface water is considered to be higher than what would be at mitigation goes in place. Increase in hard surfaces on the site as a consequence of a new development would increase surface water runoff, which could be managed as part of a sustainable drainage scheme. An outline drainage strategy has been submitted to demonstrate how risk of flooding from the site drains, residual risk of flooding from the Trent and a breach scenario. Additional surface water runoff generated by the site could be addressed. Of course, the principal element of flood risk management is avoidance of risk. So to enable this, the development is located on the highest ground within the site and avoids low lying areas within central corridors. In addition, the finished floor levels would be raised, they will put down 22.11 ALD. In effect, it's between half a metre and 1.5 metres above ground level. Which would be below the highest level in a catastrophic flood of the Trent and fluvial flooding. Other more, that I think proposes flood warnings and evacuation plans and the buildings of the property. And mentions that the open space and green space would be landscaped and providing such a way to provide a runoff for the entire site. And provided centrally and to be drained away appropriately from the site. So in summary, flood risk assessment quotes, proposed development would not increase flood risk to any areas outside the boundary. Flood risk could be managed within the site through the combination of measures described above, which are sufficient to remove the risk of flooding under normal scenarios and limit the residual risk of flooding as far as practical, as well as to provide benefits elsewhere. Of course, that's flood risk assessment, and our job is to interpret that and consult with the environment agency and our flood authority to gain expert advice on what has been submitted. Now, the environment agency confirmed to us that there's been a complex process of hydraulic modelling in the long period of time undertaken to support the application. And therefore, also for flood risk consultants and agents to reach a positive outcome. As such, we do not object to the proposals and instead recommend a condition requiring that all finished floor levels are set between 2.5 meters and 1.5 meters of ground by one. They also state at the site that an allocation has danger to most in the event of a major flood event and adjacent flood, the fences collapsing. In this scenario, they recommend consulting with the emergency planning officer, which I have done. They do not object to the proposal subject to condition requiring flood evacuation plan in the event of a major flood. I should point out, that is an event that there's a major flood creating a major disturbance in the river Trent and the railway and bank may collapse at the same time. In terms of the local flood authority, they also do not object to the proposal subject to condition requiring a detailed surface water drainage scheme being provided, set out on the basis of the modelling provided in the flood risk assessment. Similarly, seven Trent ward do not object to the proposals from principle, but recommend conditions related to submission on the drainage strategy should be submitted to them and consultation provided to them as part of the self-matter stage. Given all of that, based on information provided from consultation responses, consider the proposals would not increase flood risk elsewhere and would include mitigation measures as far as possible can be considered at this outline stage, which could then decide and manage any residual flood risk in accordance with the development plan, then PTF. Like to move on to access to highways, because that seems to be our topic. Other than flooding. And so access, this is a reserve matter, so we, as part of this application, would consider the suitability of those two access points into the site. Of course, we've not got the layout, but we've got to assume that for both employment line and housing. But it's one simple. As part of the improvements, the junction would be like two T junctions and it'd be there'd be a, what's called a ghost island, right turn. So cancer ending the junction, so be a right hand turn junction into the site for Nottingham Road. To improve pedestrian connectivity and local bus service pedestrian access to the site would be improved and widened and widened the footways on the frontage of the site. And further widening of the footways to the east of the site are proposed as part of this application. Additionally, a new section of footway is proposed to the southern side of Nottingham Road to provide access to the system bus stops and opposite side of the road. Both proposed development, post-development access needs and footway extensions are currently located around the strip with 60 mile an hour section of walking of the road. The highway authority requires the business with 30 miles an hour. This is not disputed by the applicant, can be secured by a condition and via section 278 publication of the highway authority. Plus, there's no current proposals, there's no present proposals for pedestrian cycle connectivity to the west. Indicative master plan indicates that possible cycle route could be provided to the north up out onto Home Lane and the footpath to the north. The highways authority have not provided comment on the illustrative master plan, which indicated that or contains insufficient detail for them to make comment, but it's purely illustrative at this stage. Should also be noted that a real improvement is also proposed on Barnwood Road, which is to the south of the site, provides informal access on A52. Yes, it's on the south side of that drawing, by the two dwellings, two seventy hours dwellings. At the moment, we turn right onto A52 for some reason, I don't know by any one route. But the proposal is to remove that restriction, so we cannot turn right on Barnwood Road whilst travelling southward along it. Now, in terms of the impact on the wider road network, a transportation assessment has been submitted in support of the proposals. I should take account of change on description of application, because if you recall, it was from 300 to 200 dwellings. And the level of employment land increased from one hectare to three hectares. Now it states that anticipate vehicle trip generation and distribution associated with Now, it states that anticipate vehicle trip generation and distribution associated with development states that the development is expected to create 321 trips in the EMP exactly, but sometime between six o'clock and nine o'clock in the morning. And then the evening, 256 additional journeys on the PMP which is between three o'clock and six o'clock. Consider traffic distributions are detailed in transportation assessment. Most of the traffic associated with development heads in and out of the development from the east, the Nottingham Road and A52. As are the largest traffic impacts available to be felt in A52 and adjacent RSPCA junctions. Now, highways England have responsibility for the A52 and not Nottingham Road, so the different highway authority. So highways England have stated that no additional further assessment need to be made of the impact in A52. They do not object to the proposals, but what they do request is contributions towards improvement of A52, which is included as part of the wider package by the applicant. Given there should be consideration to how the proposed development would impact on the existing RSPCA junction to the west side, our authority requests further details to be provided and to consider and ensure that Houston trunk road junction do not steep like extend back along Nottingham Road as far back as the proposed accesses. And then to the transportation assessment that subsequently submitted, considering the junction capacity, both the junction points. Modelling concludes that development traffic at EMP would increase queue length by three, took a three vehicles in the EN. The highway authority state that such an impact cannot be considered severe. Highways authority comments that one minor area of concern is the site proximity to the narrow East Barn Road. This is an improvement and error. Highway authority are completely in support of this for improvement, no objections to it. So based on information that we've received, the modelling has been done in terms of transport, the highway authority do not object, highways England do not object. Taking that into account, the proposed access arrangements for this application are considered to accord for the development plan, policy one and part two of the local plan, which seeks to secure suitable means of access for all new developments without detriment to amenity of producing properties with highway safety and apartment provision in accordance with the advice provided by the highway authority. Move on to other important considerations now, but perhaps quite the last. So in terms of landscape and visual amenity, trees on the frontage of the site are subjected to tree preservation order. Tree survey has been undertaken and conclusion of all is no trees are proposed to be removed, with the exception of a single tree. Yeah, that one there in the middle, chestnut, chestnut tree to allow for access to the site. Now, tree officers being consulted as an application, there's no objection to the proposal. Includes that a category tree being removed is not ideal from a public domain perspective, but there's clearly a budget and the benefits in creating new access. And he considers that the need to provide additional dwellings and things like that will rise or limit loss of one single tree. Now, landscape is not considered at this stage as part of the principal development, but will be subject to a future result matter application. And as part of the conditions, we see at the end of the report, we've got a series of conditions for by replacement trees to be provided and that is sort of recommendation of a tree officer. It should also be noted that no hedge roads are proposed to be removed. Let's move on to the design and neighbouring amenity. So of course, we've outlined the design, but we've got the site to consider, so that's our best guess fortunately. But still, we start taking account for the 200 units to fit into the site and clearly looking at the density of the site, the size of the site. Think that is achievable even by creating a large street or open space across the middle of the site. We think it can be accommodated and careful design of layer and design for the future reserve matter stage and could be designed so we're not going to be preparing an overlooking or overshadowing impact to dwellings. So we've got a bit of issue in terms of knowledge because it's fixed in RSPCA development and existing development and those houses and employment pieces alongside it. There's a condition requiring a future noise assessment to be provided, albeit one has, a basic one has been provided at this stage. The environmental health provides on a more detailed assessment being provided to take account of the Joe Carriage Way, the actual noise sources of the RSPCA development at the time of reserve matter stage. In terms of contamination, phase one geo environmental assessment has been submitted. They consider that there wasn't a significant risk of coal mining or other mineral extraction on the site and there's a low risk of contamination on the site itself. And our environmental health department recommended the followed on-site intrusive assessment be carried out and that's conditioned as part of this report. In terms of ecology, there's been various surveys submitted. First one was some basic ecology assessment, which considers the potential for protected species on the site now that they could be protected. Bottom line of it is the area is dominated by arable farmland and poor semi-improved grassland, which offers habitat, little floristic interest as species present were neither notable nor particularly rare. Advocate has went on to provide a number of protected species surveys in relation to birds, bats, badgers. Inclusion of all this, but some of the hedge roads do have potential for some for bats towards the north part, northwest part of the site. There's no, there's no indication that these would be removed and that can be controlled by condition. I also noted that the timescale of the reports, this site's been ongoing since, I'm sorry, 2008, the application was made in 2018. And there's requirement to update those reports as part of any new consent, which should be noted. There's nothing changed on the site or next to nothing that I know of that's been changed on the site since application's been submitted, so the potential for loops or something like that to be present on the site are only at the moment. In terms of heritage and archaeology, I mentioned before, there's no listed buildings on the site or close to the nearest ones, in fact, a kilometer away from the site. So in terms of the impact on setting of any listed buildings, very limited to actually negligible. Similarly, the impact on conservation area is too far to have any impact at all. In terms of archaeology, a written scheme of investigation has been submitted that concludes that site potentially contains archaeological remains. And so they undertook another survey to radar survey in effect over the entire area to narrow down precise locations of any potential remains. The wood tree officer has been consulted about that application and suggested that survey is taken today. I'm fairly inclusive and conclusive in that there have been no trial trenching, so we know there's areas within the site of some interest. What it is, we don't know yet, but there is areas on the site that's of some interest, but trial trenching, depending on what I like to say I'm thinking, and we're actually finding out what those remains are and how significant they are. Now, certainly it's not in accordance with the development plan, no it doesn't, because we could condition that and that may be avoided or the remains are found to be not that important as recorded and over. If necessary. Like to move to the binding obligations section, there's an attachment, whether the report, I don't know if you can see that or not. But as stated before, that kind of slot is created any developer contributions that we have requested. They're quite substantial. I'm not going to attach figures, but contributions are towards primary school provision, secondary school provision by way of the infrastructure level, improvements to A52 contribution, bus services contribution, or stock improvement contribution, contributions towards library provision, contributions towards weight provision, sustainable travel contribution, of course, the 30% affordable housing requirement, contributions towards health provision, requirement for open space and monitoring legal costs and indexation, so it's not paid if he goes, he goes up. In conclusion of all of that, which are with me, is that the recommendation is to approve planning permission subject to one sex agreement covering requirements for affordable housing and all the development contributions are settled and documented. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. That's much of our presentation. We now have three speakers for this application. The first one is what all are the applicant's agent. Now, if you come to the table, I see you well practised at this. Just remind you though that when you're ready, you have five minutes to speed. You start, you press the red button, the button on the side, on the right. And we'll start the clock then. We'll be told when 30 seconds are left. Thank you. Any ready?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. The report and recommendation of your professional officers provides you with a comprehensive and thoughtfully considered assessment of the relevant issues. Your officers' interpretation of the law and policy and how that should be applied is correct. The proposed scheme will deliver a high quality combined business and residential development where living and working environments are connected through a network of tranquil naturalized open spaces, connected footways and cycleways. The application is fully compliant with the allocation of the site in the local plan and the policy requirements directly from Trent Lake North Plan. Notably, the inspector of the 2006 local plan said that this should be the next site to come forward in the borough. Government policy is unequivocal in these circumstances. There is a resumption in favour of the development and development that according to an upstate plan should be approved without delay. Of course, that doesn't mean the planning application should be approved without scrutiny and quite rightly, your officers and statutory consultees propelled us to account on detailed technical matters over a considerable time. This has meant complex modelling of combined flood risks from both river and surface water drainage sources. These have been researched, analysed and assessed to an incredible level of detail. They can't be a part of a river where the hydrology is so well understood. Our flood engineers work collaboratively with the Environment Agency and the Legal Open Fire Authority to ensure a collective understanding approach. It's quite right and proper that we were required to do so. And the endorsement of both the Environment Agency and the LLFA to the results of this work demonstrates with evidence that with climate change factored in, flood risk from the site, of the site from the Trent is low. And in event a very significant rain event, the scheme has the capacity to hold surface water and attenuate flows. Yes, sites in flood zone two on the Environment Agency maps, these don't take account of the flood defences and provided by the mineral railway within a greater Nottingham strategic flood risk assessment, the site is currently identified as flood zone Y. During severe winter storm events over a number of years, no river flooding has taken place on the site with the fences. The surface water on fields to the north of the site have occurred, but these did not form part of the application site. Since the time of these representations, further work and modelling has been undertaken under the guidance of the Environment Agency and its endorsement of the scheme post date local representations. The council's emergency planning officers assess the residual risk of the railway bank collapsing and obviously has an objective. Notably, this risk is the same as that relating to any defended part of Nottingham. And it's the same risk as that covering most of Westbridge for the north of Lady Bay and parts of Brackford already. The residual risk in no way prevents planning permission being granted. Moreover, the railway embankments owned and managed by the council and can be considered to be publicly maintained asset. All the technical evidences agree with the EA, the LLFA and council's emergency planning. None of these organisations are known for throwing caution to the wind. You can be assured that development is safe from flood risk throughout its lifetime and it will not exacerbate flood risk elsewhere. In respect of traffic, since previous representations, your officers' report is correct to know that additional work and modelling has been undertaken. This work has demonstrated to satisfaction of both the highway authority and highways England. There'll be no significant impacts on queue lengths at off-site junctions during peak hours. In respect of noise issues, the impacts arising from the presence of the RSPCA have been assessed and the indicative master plan shows the important land wrapping around the RSPCA puts both distance and attenuation between that and the residential areas. Virtually all existing trees and hedges on the site retained. There'll be a need to remove one nominative sweet chestnut on Nottingham Road frontage and the rest of those trees will be retained and there's significant opportunity for additional native tree planting and habitat creation within the site. The proposal will deliver 30% of affordable housing and will make all the required financial contributions. The development will deliver a sustainable residential environment embedded in naturalized and connected open spaces in combination with high quality employment opportunities for local people where a genuinely link work hybrid environment can be delivered and our house builders actively interested in delivering on the site.
30 seconds.
This application is required to deliver a key element of the council's local plan and we assure you a community facing, design led scheme which will be safe, attractive and sustainable. We commend your officers' report to you and thank you very much for listening and for your time.
Thank you. Second speaker this afternoon is parish councillor Anne MacLeod.
Thank you. So it's Anne MacLeod from the Chair of Pla- Chair of Pla- 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 Parish Council. Brackford Parish Council object to this planning application for the following reasons. Rushcliffe has already fulfilled its housing requirements in the short and medium term. Nottingham Road is currently heavily used, additional housing on Shelford Road and on the old RAF New Merfield has significantly increased traffic going towards Nottingham on this road. This will only get worse as more of these properties become occupied. Our overwhelming objection is that this area is a flood plain which is subject to regular flooding events, often for weeks at a time. The risk is pluvial, in other words, it is vulnerable to heavy rainfall rather than flooding from the River Trent itself. I have lived approximately, excuse me. I have lived approximately 300 metres from these fields for over 30 years and the flooding incidences have become far more frequent in recent years. This is a pattern seen everywhere in Britain and is due to climate change. Nottingham Road itself is low lying and regularly floods. Even a moderate amount of rain produces large puddles. There is an almost permanent puddle, for want of better word, opposite the RSPCA entrance, which is still there after several weeks of dry weather. which is still there after several weeks of dry weather. Despite regular maintenance work on the road and frequent clearing of drains, this road is already vulnerable in extreme wet weather. Climate change is altering rainfall patterns. Episodes of heavy rain are increasing and are expected to increase further. This is from the Met Office, with warmer, wetter winters becoming the norm. There has been standing water in the fields where this development is planned for months on end during the last two or three years. The developers suggest the introduction of sustainable drainage and building the structures twenty-one or twenty-two metres above ordinance data. But we can't get away from the fact that three hectares of industrial units and two hundred houses will absorb considerably less surface water than grassland. Sustainable balancing ponds once full won't solve the problem. The sewage and surface drainage system will be overwhelmed. Then where will the water go? The existing surrounding housing is low lying. Runoff from this development will almost certainly increase the risk of flooding to these properties. Ground floors of houses at the junction of St Barnes Boulevard and Nottingham Road have sustained flood damage several times in the last few years. This was unheard of when I first moved to the area. This site is categorised mainly as flood risk zone two. However, the other side of the old mineral line is flood risk zone three. There are at least two culverts running under the railway embankment. Sluice gates can be shut to prevent water flowing through these culverts onto the site. However, these have failed previously, and it seems crazy to rely on them to prevent further flooding incidences. Additionally, the calculation of flood zones by the Environment Agency doesn't apparently take into account a very heavy rainfall or block drains and culverts. So it could potentially be far worse than stated. A stream runs to the west of the designated area which can become a torrent. High voltage electrical cables and pylons cut through the site. Would you want to buy a house here where you have to consider emergency evacuation? The site plan shows two T junctions onto Nottingham Road. In Rush hour particularly, the break in traffic would be insufficient for vehicles to pull out from the site safely. This road gets very busy. In the event of a proposed development going ahead, the only possible solution would be a roundabout. A precedent has already been set by the developments on Shelfford Road. This area was identified in our neighbourhood plan as a potential site for development. However, this plan was researched and written over five years ago. Since then, the incidences of flooding have increased significantly and our priorities have changed. Climate change has had a real time negative impact on this area. Numerous flood reports have been presented in the years since this first became a planning application. Thirty seconds. The reports refer to what may happen over the last couple of years, their speculation has now become fact. It is for these reasons that the parish council firmly believes that this development should not go ahead. Leaving the fields as grass meadows gives the greatest opportunity for floodwater to dissipate. We would urge you to reject this application. Thank you very much.
Our third speaker is the ward councillor, councillor Public Brennan.
Can I ask the committee to please cast their minds back to two thousand and fourteen? I know it seems like a long time ago, David Cameron was Prime Minister, before Brexit, before Covid, before we could have imagined that while we break out in Europe, but please bear with me. In September twenty thirteen, the UN Panel on Climate Change predicted that the UK would be receiving ten percent more rainfall on average per year by twenty one hundred. Not only that, we could expect this to be heavy rainfall events massively increasing flood risk. One study concluded that an additional two hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand people in Europe would be at risk of river flooding. The UK is likely to be one of the worst affected countries. In two thousand and fourteen, the UK suffered catastrophic flooding, leaving large parts of southern England underwater for over five weeks. Five thousand properties endured the horror of filthy floodwater and loss of power. The cost of this was estimated to be around one point five thousand million pounds. The country wrung its hands and declared that something must be done. Now cast your minds forward to twenty nineteen. Before November twenty nineteen and February between November twenty nineteen and February twenty twenty, severe winter flooding occurred across the UK. The first wave occurred in November twenty nineteen, badly affecting the north, the midlands and the east. Further isolated incidents occurred in December and January. Both Storm Piara and Dennis brought the second wave in February twenty twenty, resulting in the wettest February in England that's held since records began in seventeen sixty-six. In November, a major flood incident was declared in works of and a warning given for Bedford. Residents of mobile homes in Newark were evacuated on the night of November over fears that the Trent would burst its banks and became incredibly close to the same thing happening at the park in Radcliffe, with the local Grange Hall prepared as an emergency shelter for residents. In Hamsfield, the heavy rain caused a mudslide which exhausted thirty-five homes being evacuated. Transport was effectively accounted with many road and rail closures. Several areas of Radcliffe were flooded, including the fields to the north and the south of the site of this planning application. At one point, it was impossible to get into the village of Nottingham because of flooding on Nottingham Road and the eight fifty two. Locally, the village became known as Radcliffe in Trent. The flooding that winter was so catastrophic that the conversation turned to fire. Ahead of the Environment Agency, Sir James Bevan, on the twenty fifth of February twenty twenty, stated that building new homes on floodplains in England should be resisted if at all possible and only if there's no real alternative. And yet, here we are. The site before you is low lining, the majority is included zone two and some include zone three. It is by definition in the flood plain of the River Trent. All three borough councils in Radcliffe share the view that circumstances have changed since the adoption of the neighbours' planning twenty seventeen and local plan part two, and it is now clearly inappropriate to support development on this site. Can I also please you, further committed to the detail in our submission and also to our comments about access to the Nottingham Road, which were implemented by the parish council? I want to add something else. People need homes, and Rushcliffe is building thousands of them. In fact, we're scheduled to build more than the government tells us we need to build. Over five thousand more, in fact. We are building vast swathes of housing across Rushcliffe's green fields, and we do not need to build our floodplains. Moreover, the scale and pace of housing development across Rushcliffe is changing the nature and character of the settlements within it beyond recognition and forever. Radcliffe on Trent will soon be unrecognisable as a village. People have a right to live in areas of their choice. Some will choose cities, towns, suburbs, market towns, villages, tiny hamlets. We as councillors are the custodians of this borough, and it's incumbent on us to ensure that we protect the character of it for our residents now and in the future. The borough is becoming scarred by vast largely identical housing developments, many in the form of green belt, built over very short periods of time, with none of the organic growth and local nuance that characterise how settlements historically emerged. Radcliffe on Trent has taken more than its fair share of new construction. There is no urgent need to build these houses on the flood plain of one of England's major rivers. In fact, there's no need at all, so I would urge the committee to please reject this application.
Thank you. That's the end of our speakers. Colonel Officer, do you want to respond to any other points made by our speakers?
A more specific point. I'd just like to point out that the application site is allocated for housing and development plan.
Members of the committee. We're now ready to discuss this application, so I ask you not to keep repeating what others have said. We will take the point. And this speaker is going to be very, very long indeed. As I imagine that you all have something to say. Councillor Mason, I believe, you caught my eye first, followed by Councillor Brennan.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, it was a, it was a long, a long introduction to this, this application. But also, I didn't quite see the areas that they were talking about. Do we usually have a little dish red wine that shows the outline of where, say, the floodplains are? Because I didn't quite understand half of that, exactly where the floodplains are. And I wonder if they could be thought about.
The majority of the site council and chair is covered by flood zone two. And we haven't got the flood maps, let us try it this very second. And the area to the west of that RSPCA buildings is flood zone three, yeah.
So just that bottom corner bit?
Yeah.
But the rest of the site?
It's flood zone, flood zone two. Now, that, those marks don't take account of system flood defenses, but in a very strategic scale. That's why you have to do an individual flood risk assessment for each site and consult the Environment Agency for them to provide the special advice to us.
Thank you. That, I think that's helpful. So most of that site is flood plain two. That is not an immediate danger of that line of flooding, or is there?
It's managed to pair here, so. The highest is three, mediums two, one is considerable risk.
So we still have a medium, we still have a medium flood plain. On the site is still on medium flood plain.
Yes, so it's all two, I sent a flood risk of one in a hundred years.
Well, I'm sure most people here know, but I'm supposedly on the edge of a flood plain. I mean, it goes really close to me. And since two thousand and twelve, I've lived it ten times. I still am not convinced that it has been stopped in the recent, the most recent times, it's two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And being on the edge of a flood plain two, I, I hope that they can totally assure us that it will not flood. But I, I am fairly sceptical that that can see, certain areas in Rashford and in the country, they say unusually have been flooded, but haven't flooded for many years. And since two thousand and twelve, you know, obviously I've been flooded quite a number of times. Before then, I don't think there was one, and if there was, it may be only once, fifty or years ago. So yes, I have to agree with councillor Brennan, but the numbers are going up to potential. So I am seriously concerned about, about this site. Also, you say that the railway line gives some protection to the site. Well, if the site has been quite damp and wet, wet area, wet life area. Again, speaking from experience, but it has happened to my house and to the front garden, it's sinking, and to the side of the back garden, it's sinking. And that has been measured as well. My concern would be, say, if it was flooded and that railway line was actually a protection, it's the underlying, it's underneath and the underlying of that line that will suffer and it will weaken. I think I'd need quite a bit of assurance that that would be regularly checked by either the railways or the Environment Agency if this happens to be passed. Water, as we all know, is a very strange thing, and it finds different ways of finding its own level. And it does move considerably underneath as well. So there would be springs probably on that side, if I say local people said that it has been lying water on it. So, as I said, I still have concerns over that. I'm still willing to listen a little bit more, but I suppose at the time that this was passed in two thousand and fourteen, nearly fifteen, I can see that things have actually changed considerably since then. So yes, I still have some worries about that particular site.
Thank you, councillor Brennan. But we're, I'm just too, okay, councillor Brennan.
I think my, my microphone's switching off and on again. So, see, it's, maybe I'm too much, sure. So, looking at this application, and I think I'm planning where we sit in this crazy traditional capacity, assessing an application that sits within the law set out by government and known by Rushcliffe, and which then is voted on by four councillors. Since the principle of development here was very much set out by the document local plan part two, which acknowledges the objections put forward by local councillors, I think, you know, back, back then, you know, two years ago isn't very much such a long time, it certainly is, is less time than twenty fourteen, what we're asked to cast our mind back to. So, I see, this, I think, at that stage before it was included in local plan part two, this was also greenbelt, which some of the objections do also allude to. Looking greenbelt maps, you can see that this was removed from the greenbelt in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty greenbelt maps, I think, again, along with it being included in the local plan part two. I suppose so, so a question around that is kind of a fight festival. If this site will not be local plan part two, will it still be going ahead? I think on flood risk, I think we've had a very comprehensive assessment. And I think on that, I can't see a reason to object because of the strength of that and how it's been, been laid out in such a forensic way. Although there's clear appeals to, to emotion on this and what can happen and how surface water sits on a muddy field compared to how it would move through a built drain, I suppose. And also on highways, you know, we have had our, we've got two of our consultees on this that have not objected. So again, although there are strong appeals from, from local members and organisations, I can't see how we can object as a committee on that. And I have a question around the archaeology. I should be very careful with this. I mean, how do we get someone to come along and have a look at this? Because if there are things there, is that something we can stipulate from, from this committee and potentially, you know, is that something at this stage or at the later stage, we're only looking at how I? Just, I suppose, just on, sorry, I'm making a speech here, put the two, two bits there. So, you know, we told to commend the local plan and progress on that, and we need to make sure that demonstrates our idea how this applies. I think in the meantime, we have talked in council, obviously outside of this, about building a flood plain and that has been argued and things like that didn't pass. But I think that's, you know, those are my, my sort of thoughts on where we are now. And, and yes, I just, I said those two questions. And, and yes, I just, I said those two questions.
Okay. Any questions, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the question leading to the greenbelt countryside issue. So if it wasn't allocated for housing, we'd have to assess against the development, countryside policies and development. Greenbelt, which doesn't allow housing development, except in very special circumstances and agricultural developments, et cetera. So it wouldn't be supported unless it was allocated for development. Not necessarily flooding, that would remain the same, the issue surrounding flooding. But the principle of development would be significantly different. In relation to archaeology, I don't know if it's on the site yet, but the reports concluded that there is something on the site, what value that is, we don't know until we do the trial contracting. But the general approach is that the truly valuable and potent tend to avoid it much easier to avoid that area. Or if you don't think it's that valuable, we'll have to further assessment, do the trial tests and extract whatever it may be in an hour, analyser, before anything's building. That's the general approach to our project. But what significance that is?
Thank you, councillor Healy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Just a bit of background, possibly, because, I mean, my papers show two previous planning applications refused. But I, I'm told that currently with those, actually there's been four to date. If you could just confirm that for me, and if that is the case, on what grounds, whether refused. The other thing that worries me a little bit is that the applicant started off with a plan of 300 houses, which currently is 200, or could be anything between 150 and 200. I just only got the train of thought was there, oh, drove back the scene. I think the point about climate change is the way that broke stone. I wouldn't wish to, to include anything that has been said, but we're aware of that still. But despite the assurances from the applicant regarding the flooding or fact that it's bordering between one and two, it doesn't assure you at all, and primarily because the development, despite that, still feels that it wants to, may want to raise the floor level of the property by, by maybe up to one and a half metres, five foot. Clearly, there is a concern about flooding. And coupled with that, they then decide to lower the open areas and the green spaces to provide additional work. So clearly is a problem there in the minds of the planners and builders. And, and, you know, I think we're well aware of the Environment Agency's statement. They're very, you know, building new homes on flood plains, I mean, we should be resisting if at all possible. I think this could be located elsewhere, or as we know, as an environment. But we're meeting our build numbers anyway. Thank you.
Any questions, sir?
Thank you, Chair. So two questions. First one, councillor, why was previous applications refused and was or won? Plan H3 was back ten years. Of course, we've felt considerable issues because of the development plan. And yet, there is some significance to find out why previous applications were refused. But the bottom line is, they formed part of the greenbelt at that time. And development greenbelt is, it's not considered appropriate unless it's very special circumstances. And in essence, it was not allocated for development. Very unlikely that any had some with that. They're through the boundary, and anything's approved. And if you do, you'd have to go through a central compliment to, for them to consider it. If the councillor was able to prove something. Those were the last two applications, one in 2015 and one 2012. That's part of the package, my last one for the councillor. I do know that the site was started and promoted in 2008 through the development plan process for consideration. So it's at that point that the site was being considered, albeit a policy perspective, not us as an applying application. Whereas since 2008, the site's been promoted. And those are the two motioning applications that are significant of this application.
Okay, and regarding the reduction in number of houses proposed, now it's, the reason why it's only invested 200 houses, well, first of all, that's set up in the development plan, that's what the policy seems. And the reason why that is, is when you create a land allocation, we don't necessarily know exactly how the houses are really now, you know, what size they might be, and the extent of the constraints on the site. You may have to have a larger level of space. In this case, we've got integration ponds, as you mentioned, in the middle of the site. They're providing a land allocation of the land, a land stage. We don't know exactly how big that ten year pond might be. If it's small, it might be 200, that's small. The big might be 50 on it. And there's other requirements of super open space. We've also got issues with the noise adjacent to the RSPCA place. But we don't know yet. There's all those different situations whereby we can't commit ourselves to under the subject by houses, most of them bedrooms. Which we've not got the layout or the sign at this stage to suit any of our demands.
Thank you, councillor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've got, I've got five things really. And the first thing is the principle of development and development on flood plains. But I'm pretty sensitive for, you know, the, the concern about building on flood plain. This site's been allocated not just two years ago in Local Plan Part Two, which is voted for by all the ward members. And the applicants have been, you know, getting it both for development's sake. And there's been considerable amount of work done on the flood risk assessment. They, Local Plan Part Two has a condition saying that it has to be a satisfactory flood risk assessment to bring this site forward. And, and that's been provided and it's been accepted by the local agency and everything else, basically. And so, as I was also saying, I'm concerned for that. I think the kind of legal position, as I see it, is of a policy position, is that it's been, it's been dealt with, as first councillor Craig said. The second thing is the access and the desire for around that. I can hear that voice in my, in my ears saying, we'll have to look at the application that is in front of us, not the one that we would prefer to see. And, you know, the application is for two roads into the site. And it has been signed off by all, by Howways and by Siders England. As it seems, to a certain extent, two entrances and exits is preferable with what we've discovered as the ones where we are. Because it just provides you with another exit or entrance of the agency. But the, perhaps the, what needs to happen with that is a loop road that goes around. And there's only a very small loop in between these two roads, rather than a large loop. I'm very concerned about the possibly cycle track that would get access to the top of the site. But if it's possible, we, we know what this means. It means it goes in and out, I mean, funding application, and then when the country was set up, so it's too expensive. We don't own the land. It's absolutely crucial that there is footpath inside of it. If this application is built for, that there is a footpath inside path up to the north to provide a safer, more pleasant route for people to get to the little central station and also to provide access into the recreation routes and so on. That is in a condition, I believe, that I would prefer to see it as part of the access. It's not considered access. This is reserved, where is the reserve apart from access? But site of, residential access is access. So why is that not included in the, in the application? And I'm disappointed by that, really. Is the land in question up at north of the site, is that a lot in the ownership of the applicants? And if so, they should be regarded that, you know, assurances about that, and that should be, that might be, that should be before the application is approved. My first question is about the enjoyment uses, which was B1, B2, B8. But now I understand all the use classes have changed. And so my concern, when we're looking at the B2 designation, some of which can, I think, be quite disruptive next to a residential site. So I'd like to know what control you've got on what sorts of employments are going into that employment line. And my last question is about the badges. Programme 141 says that any future development should avoid system badge sets. And there are badges sets on the site. And I'd like to see that condition in this application if it goes forward. So that the work goes forward on the site and doesn't disturb them.
Okay. Serious questions, sir?
I think a couple of questions. One about use class, another one about the badge set. Just in relation to a condition, if there is a condition, it's a condition for requiring that link to the main footpath. That's covered all. In relation to the use class. It's slightly complicated with Class E that's come in, that's taken over from B1. So that also includes retail belt tubes that are all in the same use class. We're looking to restrict the use on the site, use on the site by condition. I think the question is the noise associated with Class B2 uses and the residents and RSPCA. The environmental health of this, this request of the non-sovereign on, off from ZMARS application being submitted, which considers the proximity to it. And fortunately, the land, most of the land around the RSPCA is flood zone three. So they have to put anything there, element of education. So maybe a requirement to fence it up a more than the tree planting. In terms of the badge sets, there's a policy on the policy, so a location of the, of general, but yeah, it's a requirement to update the ecological plan, but also to provide a biodiversity enhancing plan, to show no existence, which is to be protected and enhanced by any new development.
Councillor Bailey, please. Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions. One of them is, are you actually saying that the old river line embankment, will that actually stop any water coming from the trench? I ask this because we lived in Rancutt for 31 years. And I remember vividly, the recreation ground on Walk Lane, which is very close to where councillor Brennan said the mobile home park is. The homes were obviously at that stage flooded. But the recreation ground is to the south of the railway line, the railway embankment. This was flooded to about 18 inches of water, and I'm talking probably late 90s, early 2000s. But it really was, flooding was huge, it lasted for days. And I'm thinking, it's bad enough in a recreation ground. Think, what would happen if we have hundreds of homes there? Because I'm talking about, will we sort of, there'll be warnings of there's going to be flooding and so on, and floodwater. That's fine, great, it can save lives, but it's not actually going to save people's ground for properties. My other query is, is you say, or will you, I hope you will confirm, that water won't be able to get through or under the railway embankment. Surely there must be some drainage channels in that embankment at some stage. Otherwise, how could the water have accumulated the extent it did in the recreation ground? My other query is, maybe I'll just mention, yes, pylons shouldn't really nowadays be building homes for young families so close to the national grid pylons. It is a worry to me. Would I choose to live so close to pylons? The answer's no, and I think many people might share the same thoughts. And my concerns are that we're going to have 30% of the affordable homes, which is great in itself, but if we have 200, that means it's going to be 60 affordable homes. And they, they could be, as anybody else would be, near those pylons. I don't think it bears thinking about the long-term health effects there. I'm no expert on it, but I do have concerns. And I've had one other thing, I can't remember this, just bear with me a moment and I'll find it. Oh, yes, the safety of the green swain going through, that we were told from north west to south east. Is that actually following the line of the pylons? It will be. So how closely are, is it, are we, would it be permissible to build houses? And I'm not talking about the employment areas, but actual houses. How close to the pylons would it be permissible to build houses? Because I'm very conscious that we're, we're now in 21st century. We are trying to be careful in looking after the environment. You've actually got to look after to the people living in, well, what is a flood zone. So my question is, if you can answer, that'd be great. Thank you.
In relation to the pylon issue. Basically, the layout of the subject to consultation of Kaden. In terms of, of course, you can go to those pylons. There's nothing set out in policy to say, well, it's going to be five or two notes. Do them from experience, need to be a good distance from them to don't anything, and that's fine. So that, that part of the consideration that comes through the ZMARS application, if it's to that state. And we'd consult with Kaden, we'd say, initially, physicals or 12 years or 15 years, whatever that distance is. But as I said, there's nothing without policies to say, yeah, they're built, they're 100 years of, of any pylon. It's to be inside of it. In terms of the drainage channels outside the site and along, and underneath the flyover path alongside the site. We don't have that, those details at hand, but that's something the Environment Agency would often consider as part of their response to the buy application. But I don't have them at that time, because we don't have the fund, yeah, it's present, thank you.
I think, well, it's been asked, I know it's outlined, but I mean, they've been asked to judge this and we can't get an answer to something that really is, is quite fundamental to the possible flooding of the site. Because actually, I believe that there are drainage channels along that area. I can't prove it, but I'm, I am told. I don't know how correct the person is that told me on this, although he did work for Network Red for many years and is now retired. But I think unless we have a definite answer that there are no drainage channels that will now allow water to come in from the trench, if there was a really adverse weather event. I think we are really, we, we, we probably think really clearly what we're doing. And I do have genuine concerns. And my other thing is, if we have 60 affordable houses, if we have 200 in total, if we have got more and more adverse weather events, the cost of household insurance is going to be absolutely mega. And it goes with the fact that affordable houses, they are probably on limited means. And so to have enormous, not only energy bills coming in, but enormous insurance, household insurance, if they can get it in time, because obviously we're not just talking about 2022. We're talking for 100 years plus. So my query is, unless we're absolutely sure that this isn't going to be a real flood zone, I know it's in a flood plain, but I think, thinking forward, we've really got to be very, very sure what we're voting for today. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr Ashcroft, could you?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. I mean, if I can try and consolidate um a couple of the responses that Mr Miles has just given. Um, and I'm slightly caught to the place that I've got my laptop, so I could have just, just a little bit of checking. Uh, if I start with the pylons first, um, if I can just remind them, because the pylons were in place when the allocation was made. So inevitably, these issues have already been looked at. And we'll form your own judgment about the indicative master plan that the developers have worked for. But plainly, there's an attempt to design uh the site through the master plan to take and uh inevitably those constraints that go through the site. Um, there is a document called the Sense Place that was produced by National Grid uh and has a degree of involvement and corporate sign-off from a variety of host builders and landlords about precisely how this issue is tackled. Uh, inevitably, there are national guidance about what is appropriate or what isn't appropriate. Um, I think that we're right to say that these issues will be flagged up and highlighted when, if you're minded to grant point of view at that stage, we'll see those details at this stage of the application. And in terms of the flourishes, and again, it comes to the point that the bail is vague, the board member has rightly made that inevitably the risk of flooding to this site has been of paramount importance. I mean, you heard what the applicant, the applicant's agent has said, that effectively the local planning authorities held the developer to account on this issue. Uh, perhaps a critical issue, uh and it's not necessarily a reflection of the slippiness of the planning service, but this application was submitted in two thousand and eighteen. So there's been a lot of effort and diligence into understanding these issues. Um, if members want to refer to paragraph eighty six of the information and the report in front of you will see there that, that detailed bed, that detailed technical decision that's taken place about affecting the slab levels of the habitats. Um, and that's not there just to make an artificially high floor levels of habitats on the site. It's there for precisely the information that's been mapped out through the flood risk assessment. Uh, and you'll see in that, that effectively this vigorous process over the last two, three years has worked out the flood risk assessment. It's also worked out the additional thirty percent for climate change. So these issues have been properly worked through. Also, they've been properly worked through in accordance with national guidance. So since two thousand and eighteen, the National Planning Council's frame has been updated twice, once in two thousand and nineteen, or once in two thousand and twenty one. So effectively, this process has been initiative one, and it's been one which hopefully you will see has responded properly to national guidance. And within that period, inevitably, agencies such as the Environment Agency have assessed and seen the impact of heavy rain and flooding. So hopefully, the package that you see here is consistent with some of the concerns that members, local residents, parish councils have properly read. And hopefully, you can see that they've been properly mapped through. And councillor Bailey raises some very technical questions uh in terms of effectively what we're going to aim the railway embankment brings for flooding issues. Um, the details of what limited role it may um have would no doubt have been assessed within the flood risk assessment. But ultimately, the railway embankment is there as a railway embankment. Uh, and plainly, it was designed as a railway embankment. Plainly, it was designed as a railway embankment, but it was quite adjacent to the River Trent. Um, so I think members need to see it within that context. And I think members, sprout of it, should be of the flood risk assessment as a whole, rather than any technical constraints or issues that apply to the embankment. General, that helps. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next speaker is councillor Deade.
Yeah, I've, I've just fallen off on the S one oh six and contributions of what it says in here. And uh we find that developers and all the rest of it, you know, they forget that they need education, need help, need all these other things. I know that all this is done here, but how confident are we that the developer will come forward? So that's one of the six funding or show funding or both to help fund these issues as we develop. Because uh if we've got a hundred and fifty to two hundred houses or fifty to sixty affordable homes as well that are funded through or to normal here, I'd just like to know that we are confident that the developer will actively come up with the funding for these other issues as we move forward.
Thank you.
Chairman, yes, um plainly, um as you've heard, if members are minded to grant consent in open form, it will be subject to section one oh six agreement. That section one oh six agreement is legally binding. Um, I think we as an offensive team have been, have been heartened at the positive approach that the developer team has taken. Um, we are, we are doing some provisional work on sorting out the details of the agreement. Um, but plainly, we've held back on exactly working that up until, obviously, this meeting is taking place and until we can see which way members want to proceed on this. But inevitably, a section one oh six agreement is a legally binding document, and we will hold the developer to, and on it. Also, it is a legally binding document that transfers with the land. So if there are any land transactions or sales, then that would equally apply as a land charge. So you can be assured that either through the one oh six agreement or through the application of civil payments, that we will hold the land over the house builder to account and make sure that the numbers are properly applied to achieve high quality development on the site.
Thank you. Councillor Murray.
Thank you. Um, I would like to talk about education and health services too. Uh, I'd like to know where the local schools are at the moment and if a new school, school is going to be built. Would they be able to start building while they're building the house and not wait until the house is built?
As I understand it, councillor, it's an extension to the existing primary school and one of the trend that's proposed by the education authority as a result of the funds that gets received from this development. In terms of the timing, the proposed timing of payments to the council are based on occupation of each dwelling. So the first payment is suggested to be at twenty five percent of cost towards primary school contributions. Um. Sorry, fifty percent of the money that's due for primary school contributions to be paid on completion of twenty five percent of the site. So it's under the houses, completion of twenty fifth house, half the money for primary school contributions will be paid. And then, um, the remaining fifty percent will be paid on half the site of, so that's the fifty houses, all of them will be paid.
And what about the secondary school?
Secondary school contributions are sold from that to the community infrastructure level. Um, so that is built separately to the, in the threat to the developer. Um, separate to the section one oh six agreement.
Which secondary school would they go to? South Lockton.
I have to double check consultation response. As far as the, for the new secondary school places, um, it's county council that responded several times in professional series places. And we see them contributions based on fourteen places.
The which secondary school is it? But then they go to the
Well, the county council, that would decide that it'd take the money and allocate it accordingly. Not just want to say exactly what high schools would be.
Right. And there would be a place for the secondary school.
They've got to provide forty eight contributions for forty eight new secondary school places.
Yes. Could you show us on the map where the primary school is in?
Uh, I can't, I don't actually know what it's, it's been hacked. So there's target. You can comment on the screen, so I can try and get. So I'm not sure where the primary school is.
I should show you further within that, we can show it thirty one years. Um, the primary school is the infant school of Bingham Road. Um, junior school is on Copper Road, the lower half of Copper Road. Which is further along the A fifty two. Um, and then, and then you've got um South Lockton Academy, which many of us will know to be on Bingham Road School is um on Copper Road and it runs parallel with the A fifty two between Copper Road and Gold Road. What else is there?
That's the academy, A ten.
And the junior school is to the left of the academy. Uh, you see the yellow road, which is Copper Road, and it's partway down there on the left-hand side, going down towards the village. Yes, I can't see it from here. And then the junior school is, the infant school is on Bingham Road. So down at the bottom of Copper Road, turn right and it's um, it's past, it's past where Bingham Road is. Goes to Gold Road, bottom of Gold Road. On Bingham Road.
Chairman, if you have to, to manage to know that, to be able to contact people on the side. Um, plainly, the package of payments that you see at the end of the report, which is uh on pages fifty three and fifty four of your pack, um, effectively those are trial and testing payment methods. Um, and plainly, Rashford Borough isn't the educational authority, so effectively, the number used to call this to the educational authority. Um, and inevitably, in those cases, I think everybody would like local children to go to local schools, but sometimes that doesn't happen. But inevitably, this is a method that becomes, inevitably, the educational authority would, uh, work through. Plainly, each trial and testing method uh is to extend and consolidate existing schools. Um, and there's usually two reasons for that. Partly because it may not necessarily have the land to build new schools equally than it needs. But inevitably, from a financial point of view, it's so much easier and cheaper to extend an existing school than build a new school and start with all the initial staffing costs and maintenance costs. Um, so please, please be assured that this is the standard model. It's a model that generally works. And as you will see, it's a model that is a phased model. So inevitably, all the houses are not going to be built on day one, and it will take time. The houses to be built, and therefore it will take time for people to move into those houses. Plainly, some people will move into the houses already with children with school aid. People might move in without any children at all, or they might move in uh with anticipation of having children. So this is a trial and testing model, and members should be comfortable that this will work locally. And also, it goes back to the earlier point about the veracity of the section one oh six agreement. It does work easily with our picture.
It's okay, it's like on itself, Nottinghamshire Academy, which is shown on the plan, they are just the center of some of our platform for track, that's a school that contributes towards.
Thank you. Councillor Stock, if you're all.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, on the first point, I think um the officers are describing uh it's um the planning application will be subject to one oh six. Sometimes when we have recommendations with a, for an application, it is subject to one oh six. The recommendation is the planning commission will be granted, subject to following conditions, and that the senior officer agrees to section one oh six. So that wording would perhaps give greater clarity to those councillors who are concerned that the one oh six would not come forward. And that's a, a large block of text that we sometimes have on applications where a one oh six is um required. Because the, 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 the planning commission does not go forward without that one oh six uh being written. You've spoken about that, and this, sometimes it provides greater clarity when that text is written in the recommendation uh within the planning papers. Um, you've asked, I'm, I'm fairly certain I'm almost the last or last to speak. Um, and you've asked not to repeat matters already spoken to. Um, so within the application before, this is an outline um application, and it's been, been made clear, very clear that three matters being considered, the principle of development, the highways access and the flood management arrangements. The principle of development has been spoken about, and I just um, I'd say I'm not repeating the points made before, but the local plan was developed from uh for a very long period, from two thousand through all of this um, this time. And all of the changes made to the Greenbells, et cetera, were done through the council, with all councils having an opportunity to make that the council's policy, which this committee um then has, must have due consideration to, I feel. Um, that plan, as it was developed, was known to highways authority and highways agency. And in planning the A fifty two junction improvements, they knew of the local plan, policies and land allocations. So with regards, this comes to the second matter, the highways access. It's very clear that the highways agency and the highways authority were fully aware of the issues relating to the road and have not subjected to this application. Paragraph uh one 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 actually spelled very clearly states that the highways authority, not the county council, have said that there is no valid highway safety or planning reason for imposed construction of roundabout. And that's just a particular paragraph reference to the statutory consultees having considered the matters raised within the consultation, explaining that we should consider the application for us and understand that there is no highway objection. The fire, the other matter that is actually for consideration this evening, or this afternoon, sorry, is uh the flood management arrangements. People have spoken about their own personal experience of um the environment agencies and flooding issues. Uh, as you may be aware, I'm a Mac Ward councillor for Bingham, and um that development of one thousand houses north of Bingham was all in flood zone issue, um, that was not flood zone one. But the issue that surrounds the River Trent is that the Environment Agency has a very broad brush approach in its initial dealings, uh well, initial calculations as to the flood zones along, along the river. When detailed hydrological assessments are done, it is identified that when taken into account, uh, infrastructure that exists and measures that can be taken to mitigate flood level, uh flood risks, that there is um substantive work that can be done to ensure that the land is um, is addressed, and the development is addressing the flood risk concerns. And it's clear within the report, I feel, that the Environment Agency is not objecting to this application. The lead local flood authority, Nottinghamshire County Council, is not objecting to this application on flood management uh grounds. So there are a long list of conditions which do include accessible forms, not just highways access. And there are a lot of um informatives about how we want to see a good design coming forward and how it should um connect well to um, to the rest of the um development. And of course, in informative thirteen, very much reinforces the view that um the, any plan, further plan coming forward should have proper consideration for the neighbourhood plan, which was created by the local communities. So in those matters, um, I do feel that when, when, when you're looking at the actual assessment and the, the matters of, the, the consideration in this outline planning application, those three things of the principle of development, highways access and flood management arrangements. Um. The, the policies of the council, the material considerations in support of the statutory consultees and all the steps being taken to mitigate and address all of the concerns presents a very well-considered um planning application uh for us that um is worthy of some support. Thank you.
Councillor Jeffries.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank Mr Miles for going through the report. When I received mine, it actually took me four hours to go through and sustained my cups of tea and coffee and putting on stickers and so on, so thank you for that. Um. When you switch on your television, if you have time to, and you look at the news, at the moment, the thing that upsets us all is the news from Ukraine. Heartbreaking. is the news from Ukraine. It's heartbreaking. But there are other things that upset us very much. One is climate change, and the next one is flooding. All of you can remember Somerset when they had flooding. Heartbreaking. Councillor Mason, as she referred to her experience of flooding. I actually go past her house every Sunday. On some occasions, I could not get through. On other occasions, when I could get through, I went through her front gate and got out of my car. The water lapped over my feet. How do you console someone who is standing there with debris all around them? You should try it. It's absolutely heartbreaking. Things that they've treasured being thrown out because they can't be restored. So remember what she said because it's extremely relevant. Listen to the parish council. Those of us out in the county who are on parish council. We're there because our community matters to us. We know everybody there. They stop us in the street when we're in the post office, in church, going about our business. And they tell us what's wrong. Occasionally, they tell us what's right. But these are the people that you should listen to. So listen to them. And I say to the people on that council who seem to be worried about being called a town. We were called a town in Cockray a few years ago. Just ignore it. I just tell everybody, we're a very big village. Now, the animals at that shelter. Come on, those animals haven't had a lovely life. Nice things to eat, nice things to drink. The majority of those have been ill-treated. What's he going to do with them? While all of this is going on, I speak up to the animals here, chairman. And I have to say, as I live in Cockray. I know the homehouse junction extremely well. It's an absolute nightmare. People come racing down the A fifty two. Mark you. They haven't been able to do it much recently because of all the changes in the mode of junctions where there's lights. You can't go here, you can't go there. And they make up for it when the lights change to green, they put their foot down. And I wouldn't recommend anything which did not improve the junction outside the animal shelter onto Nottingham North. Thank you.
Chair, thank you. I think there is two, there's two key points there. The first is the significance of flooding. And I think all members, all officers would understand the significance of that. Plainly, members would maybe able to judge whether you think this application, based on the technical levels, is of a satisfactory nature. If you heard what the applicants have said, if you heard what the case officer has said. You can see that it's taken two and a half years to get to this point. So I hope that members will have confidence in the veracity of the process that's taken place. And the conditions and the floor levels that are being imposed to prevent exactly the situation that you have raised. And that's been done both for environmentally, since plainly, it's good environmentally to make sure that you have the developers in first. And it's also been done for precisely the reasons that you say, which are social reasons. Why would anybody in the borough want future residents or existing residents who choose the farming houses here to be subjected to them in the future? So this is probably one of the most future-proofing flood risk assessments that I've seen. Because it's introduced the floor levels that take account of quite extreme calculations for climate change. So again, as always, we're, we're asking you to look at this application on its merits. But here, based on the technical levels, and in particular, for you to scrutinize the extent to which you think this application has met the criteria, effectively during the process. The second issue about effectively the animals. You'll see that the application approaches it from the other angle. In other words, so it seems to protect potential new residents from the potential noise of the animals in the circle. Plainly, again, you'll form your own judgments about how significant that is as a considerable planning consideration. I suspect it carries very limited weight, to the extent that there's nothing in terms of this development that would directly impact on the health and wellbeing of animals within that centre. But I think your point is well met, that inevitably, you as a planning committee are looking at a broad range of issues which minds involve protection values.
Thank you. I haven't got any other speakers. I'm actually looking for someone to, Mr, sorry, councillor.
I would like to propose the officer's recommendation, not because I agree with the principle of planning of flood payment. But former group dealt because of the rules set out, this principle, on the site was set out in brief. An almost unanimous decision by full council in proposing like a plan two. I believe the concerns around flood risk have been, again, have been comprehensively examined and also by all its concerns.
Need a second.
I shall second that.
We've got a proposal, a proposal, but the recommendation on page thirty seven, the planning permission be granted subject to all the conditions that follow. And it's seconded by councillor there. All those in favour, please show. Against? Well, thank you very much for sharing its level. And so I have to cast my casting load. And I'm not going to go against what I have already devoted enough to score the principle of planning to this. Thank you.
Chair, can we clarify that that is subject to the section one oh six agreement, which we did discuss earlier.
Yes, most definitely. Thank you for your attendance this afternoon. And thank you very much for addressing this issue, which is a very long one. I commiserated with your four hours reading. It probably took me longer, but I have to go over the ones two or three times. But certainly, say sixteen twenty seven, because it's time.